Picture the...
At least to get the traffic.
This stuff out.
There's a little man that drives.
Life doesn't get much worse.
I tried that one time. I know, in that orange bread pickup? Yes, yes. He does the same thing.
That is just one of my favorite things of all time.
Is everybody does?
Yeah.
Okay.
That must be some really awesome coffee.
I guess. He had to stop at their Joe's for a donut.
Did he?
I don't know. Those donuts are... Those donuts are pretty wonderful.
Their peanut butter's frosting. Oh, oh my God.
I know, my husband loves them.
Gets like eating a baby angel.
I'm not having pleasure doing this. It's pretty good.
Joe's.
Yep. My husband just gets so irritated.
They make fresh doughnuts every day. And there is nothing as good as those doughnuts. They are amazing. It's worth stopping there on the way to Gillette just to get a doughnut.
Yes.
And the peanut butter frosting. Their chocolate is incredible, those two.
I haven't found anything bad.
They have maple.
Yeah, I like maple.
No.
Oh, you don't like maple?
There's something wrong with maple.
I like maple.
Yeah, I haven't met a donut I don't like.
Yeah, me too. Exactly. Is everybody on?
Recording in progress.
All right. Helping me to order, do we have a quorum?
Yes, Senator, we have a quorum.
Any visitor comments?
None.
Okay, new business? Social media policy?
Bless you.
Thank you.
Bless you.
And approval.
Yes, then I think in your packet you had a social media policy to review. We just need to prove that.
Yeah.
If I will make the motion that we accept the social media policy.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
I have a discussion.
Oh.
Hi guys.
Sorry.
Hi.
When it says that it applies to all associates?
Where's that at?
I believe that is supposed to be inclusive of the board trustees as well. So I'm wondering if we need to add that in there? For clarity, I've just answered.
Can you tell us where it's at?
Conclusion.
Write it again.
Introduction and it's all over the place.
Yeah, so basically.
Oh, okay. I don't see a problem with that.
Adding it?
Yeah.
Or we can change it to a different term. I just think that, I just think that there could be some ambiguity about the...
About who's the associate?
Yeah.
About who's the associate, yeah.
So if I can, the idea of a social media policy is to help set expectations for what employees and people working for the district are able to do. The trustees, if you want to address it, should be in a separate policy.
Well, the other reason I brought it up down slightly because it says it applies to all WCHS employees, volunteers, associates, full-time, part-time, contractual, and temporary. So that's to be assumed that everybody that's employed?
Yeah, it should be those working for the district.
So this is just an employee document?
Right. As fine as may.
Okay.
Because it goes into the employee handbook.
Right.
And we can always add it to...
My lawsuit.
Yeah.
Something like that, yeah.
Good thing in the word. Remember that thing?
Okay, we have a second. All in favor, did you want to do all in favor?
Well, is there any more discussion?
Allison says donut apply.
It does not apply.
Right, and that's fair enough because we don't... We're responsible technically to the people. So, fair enough.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both? Okay, is public records policy will just be reviewed? And I think Allison...
Do you want me to share it on the screen? Would that be okay?
If you want, then we all have copies also.
Okay, I, oh, it's disabled. Denise, are you able to let me share?
If I remember which mouse to use. Good.
That's the green one?
Yep.
Okay, I'm able to. Did it come up?
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah, I'll make it as big as I can. Is that visible for you guys?
Oh, that's crazy.
Does that work okay?
Yeah, yep.
Okay, so we across the state are seeing more requests for public records and we're all about transparency as public... ...positions and so I've been working with other districts, hospitals and otherwise to try and help update the public records request policy to better describe what the statute provides for and help the public understand how a public records request would work. For most of what you've seen in the past, those records requests were pretty simple, like can I get a copy of the minutes or the budget or the agenda or a policy? We're seeing more and more requests for like all communications from this date to this date regarding a general topic. And those tend to be pretty expensive for organizations like yours to process. Usually it requires you to hire somebody to, if you, or perhaps you have the talent in-house to extract those records from your database and then someone has to go through them and ensure that all of the information that's produced, is allowed to be produced for hospitals, that includes under federal and state law. And so what we've been working to try and do in these policies is help outline how, how you approach those public records requests. And I realized this is a bit longer policy, so I wanted to take the time to talk through it with you, let you chew on it for a little while, and then we'll bring it back to the next regular board meeting for the board to consider if you want to vote on it or if you want further changes. So upfront, it just talked about the act itself, then it talked about the scope is add to public records that doesn't apply to medical or birth records. It talks about who the designated public records person is, and we currently have that as Denise, and then the CEO is the records custodian. And we recommend that the boards look at and review this policy on a regular basis to make sure that it's in compliance with the law and that it meets your process. Currently you have Denise as the person who receives these, but I don't think that you have like a central email address as to where these requests go if they're being submitted, except to Denise's email. My recommendation would be that we set up a specific email to receive these requests that's not tied to a person. And so like if the email comes in, the notice could come to Denise and somebody else, or you know, if Denise ever retires, then the email would stay the same and it could go to whoever that role was. And then you guys have a form that would work fine for the public records request, so I referenced that, and it's just basically like here's what I want, date, information, which is described in the paragraph here. Any questions so far? You'll notice there's some language in here that talks about making sure that the request doesn't impair or impede the hospital's ability to discharge its other duties. We have had districts who have had lots of requests coming in from either the same party or numerous parties who are all working together in a way that it became like untenable to answer all of them all at once. So the statute does allow you some latitude to make sure that you're not shutting down healthcare in order to answer public records requests. So that's what that language is about. The statute requires you to acknowledge any request within seven days. And so we found it to be helpful to have an identifier for requests, and you don't have to overcomplicate it, but that way there's something to reference. So like who requested it, the date it was received, and if they request more than one thing, an item number for each one. And then in that acknowledgement, you need to tell them whether the record exists, whether it's paper or an electronic format, whether it's available, and if you don't have it, if another entity has control of it, and how to get a hold of them, if you know. If it is available, you should get it to them along with the acknowledgement, so long as it's, you know, not impairing your ability to do your duties. And the other thing that's important to note is that you don't have to create new records under a public records request, you only have to produce things that you already have. So then when we get on to responding to the request, beyond the acknowledgement, if it's a record that takes a little time to put together, you have 30 days to provide the response. What we've found to be helpful is to allow for free or for the cost of copying and some halftime, some questions are relatively simple. I mean, the idea is not to discourage people from asking for records, it's to make sure that if the records are substantial in nature and will take a lot of time and expense for the organization, that at some point that cost shift needs to shift over to the requester so that it's not impeding the hospital's ability to do its jobs. So if it's relatively simple, you would just go through basically the policy you have now, which is they're responsible for the costs, and those that are not privileged under law are given over to them. If it's more than $500 as an estimate of a cost, then it goes through a more complex And so basically the organization would need to figure out how many records are there that would be produced based on this, like for example, we've had requests that are over 10,000 emails.
Oh wow. Can you give an example of what that would be? Excuse me.
What's that?
Could you give an example of what that would be? Like...
All emails regarding the hiring of a CEO from August of 2020 to 2022.
Okay. Thank you.
Right? Yeah, and so your organization probably would not have that many, but it's possible based on the search terms that you could. And so what we found is helpful is in those cases that are very technology-centered, that you usually need to have somebody help you compile those records into a database format that can be more readily searched. And so this is laying out the process for that. So you would let them know that this is a more substantial search, what the estimate would be of what it would take to get those records searched, and if they want to proceed with it, they'll need to deposit the estimate for you to proceed with the search.
There seems to be a lot of... Allison, there seems to be a lot of different timetables here. I mean, one week for this, 10 days for this. Pardon?
Yeah, the seven days and the 30 days are statutory. What we found though, Connie, is it's really important to have timelines because if you don't, then it doesn't really lend itself to a process that can be followed easily. And so by having these timelines in here, it gives everybody a clear expectation of what will happen.
I also wondered what happened to our item two. Our numbering is one to three for what it's worth.
Oh, yeah, I probably need to update that. I was trying to get this done so I could go through it with you guys, and I had a few other things on my plate, but...
I understand, I'm not trying to be overly critical, I just wondered if two was missing or we don't need two.
I probably took out something that I thought was excessive for the structure of your organization, is my guess. And so then if, in addition with that, you'd also want to provide an explanation of any records that you couldn't locate and what, you know, generally what they are and why you couldn't locate them. And then if you have any records that are denied because they're confidential or otherwise not allowed to be produced under law, you'd have to provide that explanation with a citation to why they're being denied. And then it allows the parties to adjust the timelines if necessary. Sometimes it's difficult to get records produced as quickly. And so you produce what you can, but you may not be able to produce all of them within that timeframe. The policy allows Denise to make efforts to try and work out details with the requesting party. And then there's a section here that talks about electric public records response requirements. And so it just tries to help outline that we don't create records for people. If we're able to produce it in electronic format and it doesn't disclose something that shouldn't be, then it will be, if they want it, it can be produced in that format or other formats if they request.
Would be, would that, would there be a less...
Then number seven is pretty important.
Would there be a lesser cost to that?
Go ahead.
Would it be a lesser cost to that if it were electronic formatted?
Yeah. Sometimes. It just depends. So like if it's an Excel spreadsheet and it doesn't have data that is protected, or the protected data could be redacted or removed, then you could provide a spreadsheet. Providing emails in their original format could be ridiculous. It just kind of depends on the sophistication of the requester and how many items of the data we're talking about.
Okay.
For example, on some of the figure searches that my partner Tom and I've had to do, we estimate we can review at one email every three minutes if we're cooking through them to try and make sure that they don't contain protected information. So then number seven, we found to be really important is if you have these large data requests that you work with the requesters to make sure they have a, you create what the dataset search looks like, so it's the range of dates, especially if it's at the email, like which parties are you looking for emails, who and from, and are there any search terms that you're looking for in those communications? Like certain words? Questions? And then... This last part about the cost estimate tries to explain what happens if you have an outside vendor that you need to hire. As I said, we, probably in 90% of the cases, you won't have this issue, but for those that you do, it's important to set out the process by which the requester can access the records while also not financially sinking your organization in trying to gather this data. And then there's a resolution process in this, and this is going to include the length of how you would interact with the OMS Fuzzman to the extent that the Requester disputes what your responses are, and they always have the right to go to the district court, but this is the process that your organization will follow unless you were they file with the district court. And so it allows you to submit information to the OMS Fuzzman confidentially, and then the OMS Fuzzman can give you their thoughts on whether they think that the document should be produced or not. That's kind of what all of this does. And then we talk about what is a public record. This is important, this is policy that you as the board would need to decide that you wanted to adopt and adhere to organization-wide, which is you guys don't transact business on your personal emails or phones, and that all records that have to do with the Weston County Hospital District reside on Weston County Hospital District systems, which would be the Outlook system. Some of our clients have gone to using text databases that are owned and controlled by the organization such that the organization could search them and turn over those records if there was a request. Whether you want to do that or not is up to you. And then we talk about definitions, and so this part I feel like is really helpful to the public so that they can see what we consider to be a public record and what records are considered non-public or confidential under slumming of federal law. As Denise said, it's a much more robust policy than what you currently have, which is about three quarters of a page.
Yeah.
But I think it's also a really helpful tool to give the public more information about how this works, and it helps Denise or whoever's doing this job to have a stronger policy to work from. I'd like to, oops, I have a typo. I'd like to as part of this, work with you, you know, improve your website so that the minutes and the agendas and any of these records, you know, the budget and things that are clearly public in nature and should be out facing are posted on the website in a place that can be referenced under this policy. So, that's it.
There's a, there's a typo on the first page, under public record request and response process, second line, it should be public record person. It's P-E-R-O-N right now.
I kind of like Peron.
You like Peron? He is kind of cringy, isn't he?
Spanish.
Oh, that's right, Spanish, that's a verb.
Leave it in the hands of Don Peron.
Yeah.
Sorry, I don't see it.
Say it again.
It's under public records request, under, keep going down.
Oh, okay.
It's right, second, second sentence.
Designated public records.
Peron.
There you go, yeah.
Perfect. Thank you. Then I'll go through it, you know, for cleanup, but...
The first sentence.
There are some philosophical questions in here of like, is this what you want to have? Are you comfortable with this? Does it help the organization? And I haven't really gone over it with Randy and his team yet either, so this is just first blush to get, give you guys a chance to understand it and think about it.
Mr. Curly would like to speak? Yes, what was that again?
Oh, I was just observing that it looks like the very first sentence under the heading policy statement is lacking a verb in the sentence. It probably was meant to say something like, this policy statement sets out the cost and so forth. But there's no verb.
I guess I don't see it.
Yeah, I agree.
No, there's not.
You can't see it because it's not there.
Oh.
So this is the process.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, gotcha, okay. Thank you.
Who was your English teacher, Mr. Curly?
That is doing my sixth grade English teacher.
I think we all have it.
She should have a ribbon.
This is Jacobson's name.
Also, Allison, kind of where, in the same public records request and response process, it talks about exhibit A attachment, the public records request form is provided as an example, is that attached to this or where do we find that? I'm just curious because I want to see what the request looks like.
Yeah, you currently have, you currently have one.
Okay.
To the old policy.
In the old policy, okay, so that's the word, okay.
Yeah, and it's very plain, but you know, it could be updated a little, but you mostly just need a form in case someone actually fills out the form. What I've found is most of the media sites these days just email, and that's fine so long as you have this information that's set out here.
Okay. Well, I like examples. It helps me understand things much, much better, so that's what I was saying, if I could see it, see what it looked like, so.
Do you want me to smooth to you?
Yeah, if you don't mind, if you don't mind, thank you. Easy of access.
Well, it looks pretty comprehensive, but yet short enough to get the point across.
Am I good to stop sharing?
Thank you.
Yeah. I just figured out how. There we go. So that's all I had on that, and I guess it's up to the board whether you're ready to bring us back at the very usual board meeting to get, I would suggest that we try and keep these matters that we're voting on to the extent we can on new things at the public board meeting, the regular one. So, especially if I was comprehensive as this, I'd like to have it on the regular agenda.
And it's not necessarily urgent that it has to be done today.
Right. No, absolutely. No, so do you want it on next month? I mean, this April's agenda? If the board will be ready? Okay.
I think Allison, you had said that it wasn't reviewed, Randy and your team haven't reviewed it yet, right? So I would say that it should be put on our agenda well after you guys have had time to review and revise it.
Okay, any other questions, comments?
Thank you, Allison.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, NH Leadership Solutions, Thomas Snyder.
Hello.
Hello.
How is everyone? I'm trying to share my screen. Let's see if that comes up. Can anybody see that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Absolutely, I'm with you. Y'all should have in your possessions the agenda coming up this next week. Just wanted to go over it with you very briefly. I see my colleague Charles is joining us. Thank you, Charles, for stepping away from vacation with your family to join us. As you can see, we're meeting with all the leaders in the organization. We're starting off with the Dr. Reimer, Dr. Bybee, and Dr. Franklin. We're starting off with the Dr. Reimer, Dr. Bybee, and Dr. Franklin. Then we're into each department leader going throughout the organization. We are, you may see, like Kim, there's a gap after Kim. As you can see, she covers a lot of territory, both equality, safety risks, corporate compliance, citizen compliance, credentialing, and probably a few other things as well. Every day we'll be exiting with Randy. You see, we're meeting with your long-term care folks, with K.C., Jessie, and Melissa, with a gap in there as well. We're covering a great deal of territory. We're meeting with some of the elected officials, thank you very much, elected officials. And then we will finish it out, meeting with board members, and exiting with Randy on Friday. There is a gap on Friday morning. There are a couple of people that we have not nailed down yet for interviews, but they are people whose schedule can be adjusted pretty easily. So those are, we'll be filling those gaps. Any questions on the agenda? I hope. We're excited about being there again. Charles and I, y'all have a special place in our heart, and we're looking forward to seeing the team and meeting new members of the team. All right, let me start sharing on that, and we will go to the next one if I may.
So I have a couple of questions, but I don't know when is appropriate to ask.
Anytime. Go ahead.
Anytime. We're not voting on anything, so go ahead.
Okay. So, so I understood when I was talking with you, whenever that was, a few days ago, that, that you basically were done doing stuff with the clinic. But then shortly after that, I hear all sorts of things about secret meetings and non-secret meetings and over at the clinic. So, explain.
I'm not, I'm not going to be able to respond to that or answer that, Carrie. I apologize.
Okay.
Doing an operational assessment.
Okay.
But we're not done with the clinic operationally. You'll see, on our agenda, we're meeting with Amanda and Lynette.
Right.
As well as Dr. Reimer on that operations of that clinic.
Okay. So, so, so what do I, how do I respond when people ask me whether H and H is still doing things with the clinic? I say yes?
So we're doing an operational assessment.
Okay. And then the, and then the other thing that was different too was, is I, I had understood when you talked to me that you weren't going to interview community members, but then you have a couple on, which I think is good.
When we had talked, you were saying, oh, we're going to interview community members and who might interact with the hospital. We talked about a lot of our directors and people that we are interviewing with are also patients. So we're getting that community view from there. And I agree, getting our elected officials opportunity to have input into that is important. So I apologize if I misled you on that.
Okay. Well, I was glad to see it. I just was, I just had thought that's what you're doing. So I wondered what was happening, so.
And in an operational assessment, we certainly want to focus on those who are closest to the bedside, in our terminology.
Right.
And we want to hear that those who interact with our hospital, or how their events are happening. Now, we also have great data on customer satisfaction surveys, so that factors into that as well. Um, are we? Is that, does that make, are y'all seeing this?
It could be larger.
Full screen, I'm sorry. Hold on two seconds.
I think.
Are you seeing the?
Don't you have to go in the present?
Presentation.
Yeah, it came up on the other screen. Sorry about that.
Never lose those skills.
No.
Hold on two seconds, let me restart that.
I've made many a mistake, and that's your best teacher.
While Thomas is working to set that up, our operational assessments are kind of a head-to-toe assessment of the organization. It's also in the form of teaching. So we try to understand where you are, what good looks like, what benchmarking tools that are, or whatever programs that we're looking at, whether it is the compliance or the quality or the customer service. So when we're spending time with your team, both now and when we come back to deliver that, it is in the form of education to really show where we find this benchmarking data, and how we can work with the team to, to learn as we work through this. So please know, as we do this, it's a teaching opportunity. It's never designed to be a gotcha moment, by all means. I know some folks are a little bit worried about that. But it really is to help take the organization to the next level, kind of shoulder to shoulder. I know some folks are a little bit nervous. Our goal is to do the best we can to make them feel as comfortable as possible.
Well, hi, um, Charles, this one is not coming up on screen as I would have anticipated.
All right.
Hold on two seconds, I'm going to shoot it to you. I think knowledge.
When it works.
Denise, I can shoot it to you as well.
Okay.
This, Thomas, this was shot to you this morning, correct?
Oh, correct.
And if you send it over while I look, then I could share my screen and you can work through it.
It is on its way. Here it is, right here, I'm bringing it up. All right. And then I'm going to work to share my screen as well.
Yep. Oh, that's.
Everybody's?
Yes.
Great.
Thomas?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm, um. So, this is from Aubrey, your social media guru, y'all have all met her. A bundle of personalities shoved into the body. And this is what she and Denise and your team are doing, just doing a phenomenal job. As you can see, we're getting into stronger branding, we're looking to build the fonts. And the response has been quite extraordinary. Recognize that she started a month ago today, working on this. So if we can go to the next slide, please, Charles. This is your Facebook post. You can see that she's got 14,300, she's got 1,400 followers, your profile's 4,300, you got 38 posts. All the numbers are green, you're growing. There is a hunger for information, there is a hunger for an electronic format, and this is evidence of that. If we go to the next one, please, sir. Many of y'all have seen this before. You can see there's almost 2,000 in the reach for some of our pictures, or some of your pictures and videos. It's quite extraordinary. We, you know, absolutely adore the, you know, the comments on the cooking, absolutely adore that there's 1,700 plays on that. This is again on Facebook, next slide, please, sir. This is on your Instagram. Again, there's great numbers going forward. Again, there's, there's a need that's out there, or this is feeling a, a hunger that is out there. Next up, please, sir. And this is your LinkedIn. 32 posts, 37 profiles, 193 followers, all good numbers, and very pleased about this. And again, this is in one month. And I believe that that is Aubrey's presentation. Next slide, yeah. Questions for you, please ask away. Charles, thank you very much for saving my neck once again. So, to the board of trustees, there's great movement out there for you. I think that this speaks to your community and how they wish to communicate. Seems to be an electronic format, the social media format. We will continue to put things out there on social media.
You know, I'd like to add a couple things, I think, Thomas, on that. You know, social media is, whether it's evolved from print to social, it's a combination of both, one of the primary forms of communication. Healthcare is significant due to engage a community. We all are ambassadors of the hospital itself, and so we encourage all levels of the organization to like and share. If you all had, say, 100 each followers, and there was 10 in the room, you're looking at 1,000 more people that can hear the great story of your organization. What Aubrey is working to do with many of your team members is tell your story specifically with your people. So the stock photos that sometimes come with social media generally doesn't get a lot of likes or shares, doesn't reach a lot of folks. But truly, the pictures and the stories of your, of your team and your patients really resonate with your community, and really can excel through the algorithms that these social media platforms have to really extend the story throughout your community of the great work that you guys are doing, especially around delivering great patient care. Does anybody have any questions on social media?
I can tell you, I can tell you from my own experience, my law firm has started doing more online marketing. And the reason we decided to undertake it is because basically everybody younger than me is starting to shop for services, and they do it online. So.
Thank you, Allison. Although Kim is in the room or not, but she was sharing an anecdote earlier today about the electronic patient satisfaction surveys that the organization uses. And I think she said something in the neighborhood of 70% are over the age of 65 who are communicating via electronically, which was shocking to me. I would have thought it's just the opposite, but apparently maybe you can teach an older person the new trick. So, uh. And that's it for H and H's update. Answer any questions that, that you have. We'll see you in a couple of days. Really looking forward to being there. I understand that the weather's turned nicer, so I certainly appreciate that coming to Malibu.
They owe it to us for the whole weather.
Sorry, we're talking weather.
You brought it up. You've been having questions?
Thank you.
So, so just a quick question again, I'm on the process. So in these meetings that we have with you, will you tell us what's, what you're finding in all your meetings?
In my meetings with you, with all the board, as we talked about, is really how do you work your processes for the governing board, as many of y'all heard my spiel, is how are you interacting with the CEO? How are you, how are you doing your board functions? How are you being ambassadors in the community? What are you hearing from the community back? It's really processes. And then, at our presentation on May 3rd or 2nd, you'll have a final result. Here's that, the opportunity to ask any questions that you'd like. But certainly by next week, I promise you, you know, whatever we, we have in our brain at that time, probably isn't the right answer, or the actual correct answer, is still, is still an ongoing process of learning, the process of how you operate. And you being the governing board, or you being the foundation, or you being the medical staff, or you being radiology, or you being nursing, each individual department or each domain, we try to learn as much as we can, on how, quote unquote, that customer flows through that domain.
To add to that a little bit, our commitment is if we find something significantly abnormal, any red flags or compliance challenges, definitely we'll escalate it right then and there. Do we believe that we're going to find significant things? Sometimes we do, sometimes we don't. Is there learning opportunities? There's always learning opportunities. But if there is something of significance, regulatory, patient or staff safety, those type of things, we will be escalating it right then and there to Randy, and then Randy off to the team if needed.
I don't have any.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Well, I guess, then I will make a motion that we leave our special.
Board meeting.
Who's going to do that when I'm gone?
I don't know.
All right, Jane.
Who seconded? Make the motion, who seconded?
I'll second.
I can get to church now.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Did you all vote? Yeah.
On favor.
Hi. She just called it. Sorry.